All right, thank you councillors, officers in gallery. Welcome to the December scheduled meeting of Swan Hill Royal City Council. Swan Hill Royal City Council acknowledges the traditional custodians of the land on which we meet and paves its respects to their elders past and present. Councillor McPhee, the dedication.
We beseech you Lord that we may be granted wisdom, understanding and sincerity of purpose in the decisions we are called on to make for the welfare of the people of the rural city of Swan Hill.
Amen. Thank you, pleasure to serve. Joining us today, we have CEO Scott Barber, Director of Community and Cultural Services, Bruce Myers, Director of Development and Painting, Michelle Granger, Director of Corporate Services, Barn Patate, and Director of Beautiful Structure, Leah Johnson. Do we have any, I don't have any apologies, so we'll move on from that. Minutes of the November meeting, could I have somebody to confirm minutes from the meeting held on the twenty, last time, twenty sixth of November, sorry. Move councillor Jennings, second to councillor Thornton, those in favour? And that is carried, thank you. Disclosures of conflict of interest, councillors, do you have any disclosures of conflict of interest? Councillor Rogers.
Yes, River Road and Little Mersey Road.
So items, just for clarity, items two point eight and two point nine on the agenda. And councillor Jennings.
Mr Mayor, just for clarity, we want to get it right from the start, they've got to explain what the conflict is, not to say that we've got a conflict.
Thank you councillor McPhee, so just very stating what your conflict is, being accorded with the local government act. Councillor Rogers.
Close association.
On both counts?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And councillor Jennings?
Conflict with the in camera session, I think it's five. My indirect conflict with regard to my hospital position.
Just for noting, thank you. Joint letters and reading of petitions. Mr CEO.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, we've had one submission, just trying to read that. One submission from Darren Scott expressing concerns in relation to the Campbell Street pedestrian crossing which is attached to the report. I'd just like to mention, under the governance rules, this was submitted as a petition. We've received it as a joint letter as it doesn't strictly conform to the governance rules. Having said that, Mr Mayor, we'll handle it the same as we would with a petition. So what we'd like to do is ask councillors to move that we receive this joint letter and that the CEO relevant director considers the joint letter and write through response. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr CEO. Any questions of the CEO in regards to this, councillors? If not, can I have a motion, please? Move councillor Rogers, second to councillor Anglefield, do you wish to speak to the motion at all councillor Rogers?
Just to, yeah.
Microphone please.
Does he accept the recommendations and yeah, look for feedback on what we can do?
Thank you, councillor Anglefield, do you wish to speak? Nothing further to add? Anybody speak against it? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? The motion is carried, thank you. Public question time, we have one public question that has been submitted in accordance with our governance rules. It comes from Dean Hurston who is the, oh can I motion the standing orders be suspended for public question time? Move councillor Rogers, second councillor Jennings, thank you. From Dean Hurston who's with council watch, the question is, what is the approximate cost per public council meeting for councillor and staff meals, refreshments and beverages? Sorry? Oh sorry, sorry, we need a vote on the standing orders, those in favour, there's been standing orders, thank you, that's carried, thank you. Mr CEO, you're going to respond to this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Mr Hurston, for your question, the answer is nil cost.
Thank you, can I have a motion, the standing orders be resumed?
Mr Mayor, before we do that, because obviously Mr Hurston's not here, will he give a written response to the answer?
Yes councillor McPhee will provide a written response and yeah, it's nil cost, but thank you.
Right, can I have a motion now to resume standing orders, thank you councillor McPhee, second to councillor Broad, those in favour? Motion is carried, thank you. We have no open forum and so we'll move on to agenda item two point one, which is the council plan progress report. Mr Patate?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this report provides the review of the council's performance against the council plan.
Microphone? Microphone please.
Twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five, the progress report is an update against four pillars of the council plan, Mr Mayor. One livability, two prosperity, harmony and fourth, the leadership. The report is prepared in accordance with the Local Government Act, section ninety, and reports one hundred and ten action that the council is required to deal with throughout the plan. The fifty six percent is complete or ongoing, thirty percent of the actions are at the planning stage, sorry, three percent of the actions are at the planning stage and forty one percent is in progress, Mr Mayor. The report, I'll take it as read, Mr Mayor, happy to take any questions.
Any questions of Mr Patate, councillors in regard to the council plan progress report? There's no, yes councillor McPhee?
Some of those, Mr Patate, all those that are in progress, are they likely to be concluded before the end of the plan?
Some of them would be concluded, Mr Mayor, and some of them would be with the approval of the, this council, would be included in the new four year plan.
And just one follow up question, because it's not common practice to complete every one of those hundred and ten initiatives on each plan we do each year, there's always some carry out.
That's correct, Mr Mayor, we do have budget constraints and labour constraints, inability to get the contractors on time and weather also plays some part in the completion of the programme within the council plan, thank you.
Thank you, any further questions? If not, could I have a motion, please? Councillor Thornton, as per recommendation? Thank you, second up. Councillor McPhee? Councillor Thornton, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Just to congratulate council on its progress and gratitude for the report, obviously there are things that will take over into our next council plan that we look forward to creating next, next year and no further comment.
Thank you. Councillor McPhee, do you have anything to add?
Well, thanks, Mr Mayor, look as councillor Thornton said, there will be stuff carried over and you need to congratulate the staff on the work they do. It's important when we do set a council plan that we don't make it too easy for staff because if they get everything done, obviously we haven't challenged them enough, I don't believe, as councillors. And so I think it's, but they do do a fantastic job and this is a great document to see how they're progressing throughout the four years and like the questions I raised were, it is not common to have everything done and I think it's, it's good to have a plan that is aspirational in its views. So thank you, Mr Mayor, and thanks to the staff for the effort they do, thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Motion is carried, thank you. Item two point two, the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four rates surplus. Mr Patate?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this report deals with the council allocation of council surplus following the completion of twenty three, twenty four financial statement and audits. Council reported rate surplus of one point two five six million, Mr Mayor, and we are making a recommendation, the table below on the report, recommendation from the officers for the allocation of the surplus, Mr Mayor. The report, I'll take it as read, happy to take any questions, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Patate, any questions of Mr Patate's report, councillors? There's no questions, can I have a motion? Councillor McPhee? As per recommendation, thank you councillor McPhee, I have a second for that motion. Councillor Jennings, thank you, do you wish to speak to the motion councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor, yeah, look this is a surplus and the report indicates where it's come from, there's a lot of it in relation to staff, positions not being filled, obviously that has an impact on the council plan that we just adopted prior, the completion of that. But those projects that were identified haven't been, had a budget allocation issued to them, they are important projects, especially a couple of them that were raised by previous, the previous councillors and I think it's important that we do take into consideration what their plans were for that funding and I think it's a, it's a great scope of works that the officers have come up with in relation to spending that money that would otherwise have to come out of future budgets. So and the fact that it come from a previous budget, we've got to make sure that we cover what was missed out previously. So I think it's very important and thank you to the staff for putting this list together for us, thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Councillor Jennings?
I just support what councillor McPhee said, it's a pleasing surplus to achieve and I think it's an appropriate use of that surplus with a nice spread of projects that may have struggled to get funding otherwise, so it's a, it's a good result all round.
Thank you councillor Jennings, anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Motion is carried, thank you. Item two point three is the quarterly review of financial performance and our financial position to the thirtieth of September two thousand and twenty four. Mr Patate, again.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this report provides the performance and financial position of the council as of thirtieth September two thousand and twenty four. We have got a small profit and favourable and unfavourable variances are reported on page sixty one of the, sixty one and sixty two of the agenda, Mr Mayor. I will take this report as read, I'm happy to take any questions, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Patate, any questions councillors? There's no questions, could I have a motion regarding the report? Councillor Anglefield, move those per recommendation?
Yep.
Yes, thank you, I have a second for the motion. Councillor Thornton, councillor Anglefield, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No, only just to say that at the moment, at this stage, it's still pleasing to see that we're coming in with a slight surplus and we'll see how it all plays out in the end.
Thank you councillor Anglefield, councillor Thornton, do you wish to speak? Nothing to add? Is anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? Motion is carried, thank you. Item two point four, the prevention of sexual harassment policy, Mr Patate?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, this policy deals with the sexual harassment, council has the legal obligation and responsibility for, to provide, to prevent sexual harassment and applies to all councillors, council staff, volunteers and contractors, Mr Mayor. I'll take this report as read and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr Patate, are there any questions councillors in relation to this report? Councillor McPhee?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor, yes, Mr Patate, the, the policy seems to be very long winded in relation to the number of pages. My understanding is policies, a lot of this is how the policy is implemented, shouldn't that be a procedural rather than part of the policy? Shouldn't there be a procedure that's behind the policy?
Can be, Mr Mayor, we can look into streamlining the policy in future and provide a procedure to go with the policy.
Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, can I have a motion, councillors?
As per the recommendation.
Councillor McPhee, second to councillor Thornton? Do you have a hand up? Yes, thank you, sorry, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, just quickly, yeah, it's, look, it's important that councils do have policies, but policies are supposed to be short and succinct in their, so they're easily read, you get too long winded and people don't read the policies and understand them. How they're implemented, I believe, and that's why the question was asked, we should have procedures behind them, which has been in the past, rather than having a, it was eight to ten pages of policy, it seems excessively long, we may manage to look at this into the future and when we review it in the future, look at the, having something like that in the process because policies are supposed to be very short into the point. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McPhee, councillor Thornton, do you wish to speak?
A brief word, just that obviously sexual harassment of any kind is unacceptable and I hope that this, the adoption of this policy is a step forward for this council in terms of prevention of sexual harassment and look forward to, as councillor McPhee noted, the implementation of it which will be as important as the policy itself.
Thank you councillor Thornton, any speakers against? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? The motion is carried, thank you. Agenda item two point five, events for program requests for funding, Miss Granger?
Thank you, Mayor, we've got a report in front of you regarding additional funding for community events, when funding applications are received outside the normal opening program for the grants, a decision needs to be made by council. The Robbenvale Christmas community event has already been held but they sought a request for fifteen hundred dollars additional logistical support and that was to close Perrin Street. I attended that event on Friday night, it was a great success, I think the event wouldn't have been as good without the street closed because it allowed the event to occur in the middle of the business district, a number of the shops were open, it's the area where they had the stage and a lot of the food vans and that allowed Cake Square to be the venue for all the children's activities including pony rides and face painting and stuff. So that's really just an internal budgeting shift to cover the costs of the outdoor team, setting up some road closures. The other request you've got in front of you is for the Lake Boga fireworks, they've already been successful in funding through our grants program but they are seeking an additional five thousand dollars cash support to ensure that the event can be run. It's the only New Year's event in the south of the municipality, in this case we have additional event funds available because Robbenvale Euston Ski Event has been cancelled for this year or next year, so we're recommending that you make allocations towards those two events.
Thank you, Miss Granger, any questions councillors in regards to the report? There's no questions, could I have a motion, some description? Councillor Jennings?
I'll move as per recommendation.
As per recommendation, thank you, do I have a second for the motion, councillor Broad? Councillor Jennings, do you wish to speak to the motion?
I think that they're both worthwhile, worthy of funding, but I will just make the comment that the Lake Boga one needs to be looked at on a year by year basis to see whether there's other similar types of activities that may, that may need some funding as well, they've been reasonably successful over the time, so happy to support both those this time around and relook at them in the future.
Thank you councillor Jennings, councillor Broad?
Yeah, as councillor Jennings said, thank you, Mr Mayor, I think great, great events have happened, obviously one's already taken place, I think it's a wonderful, wonderful thing if we can have community events that we can support as a council, so families can go, people can go, so massively support both of these funding requests, very happy to see it, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Broad, anybody wish to speak against the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour? The motion is carried, thank you. Agenda item two point six, Australia Day, Miss Granger?
Thank you, Mayor, this report outlines what is planned for Australia Day two thousand and twenty five, build on feedback that we received from Australia Day two thousand and twenty four events and a community survey we did at the end of those proceedings this year. Saturday the twenty fifth of January, we're planning the award and citizenship ceremony in the morning in Robbenvale and in the evening in Swan Hill. Then on Australia Day on the twenty sixth, we have a number of small town events including Beverford, Lake Boga, Nia Nia West, Boundary Bend, Manangatang, Pyangle, Weeman, and Warren and Willall Run Events and Robbenvale and Euston run a combined event. In the case of Swan Hill, we've had, we've put out an expression of interest to run a community breakfast, the Rotary Club has expressed an interest to run that event at Riverside Park, Swan Hill, they will do it with the representatives of both Rotary Clubs in town and also the Lions. They will provide some entertainment, they will cook a breakfast, they're seeking some logistical support and also a grant of three thousand five hundred dollars. Then after that, there will be a shared connections event held in Riverside Park that evening and that's been the subject of a successful grant, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Miss Granger, any questions councillors in relation to Australia Day? Councillor Thornton?
Just querying the shared event, shared connections event from last year, was that funded as part of the grants program last year or how was that funded last year?
That was funded by council applying and receiving a grant, so.
Fully support the event by the way, thank you.
Councillor McPhee?
The awards and citizenship ceremony?
Microphone, please, sorry.
The awards and citizenship ceremony, you've got ten thousand dollars here, what's the cost of running a citizenship ceremony during the year?
So each event run during the year, it costs us about twelve hundred dollars and that covers off town hall hire, the welcome, the didgeridoo and the certificates and plans. For the Australia Day citizenship ceremonies, I do have a breakdown of costs, I'll keep it with me while I get to the relevant screen. Yeah, so the, no, I've got a bit of breakdown, so there's costs in entertainment, in the welcome to country, catering, the awards and the plans.
But with all due respect, we have a welcome to country in the normal citizenship ceremonies which are twelve hundred dollars, we hire the whole out in that cost, where does the eight thousand dollars come from? Or roughly eight thousand eight hundred, whatever it is.
Yeah, so the costings that I have received is that we have a fifteen hundred dollar cost for, so I'll break them down into Swan Hill and Robbenvale because they both comprise budget, so we have videography charge of twelve fifty, catering and bar of four thousand, the welcome to country at five hundred, didgeridoo at a thousand and entertainment at five hundred which is about seven thousand for Swan Hill. In Robbenvale, we've got venue hire for two fifty, catering five hundred, welcome to country five hundred, didgeridoo five hundred and entertainment five hundred at two thousand five hundred, that's the ten thousand dollars allocated in the budget line in the report.
And for our Christmas, Mayor, our overall budget for the Australia Day celebrations is twenty thousand dollars?
That's correct.
Have we spent the whole twenty thousand dollars?
No, when we add all the figures including the grant funding, we have about fourteen hundred and fifty dollars excess.
All right, was that, how much was that?
Fourteen hundred and fifty.
All right, and one last question, for the Rotary, the two Rotary Clubs and Lions Club are putting their barbecue on at Riverside Park this year?
That's correct.
Are you aware that they are putting funding themselves into running that event?
Yes, the application that they discussed with us is that each club will contribute five hundred dollars if council contributed, the three thousand which has now increased to three thousand five hundred.
And what's that three thousand five hundred cover?
That would cover, I would say, the bulk of the food and there's a hundred dollars of logistical support, or just over a hundred dollars of logistical which is assisting them with waiving permit fees.
Well, my understanding, talking to the group, is that is actually for the sound system they run down there, the majority of that's three and a half thousand dollars.
I'd need to take that on notice, I can't answer that question.
All right, thank you.
Thank you councillor McPhee, any other questions? Councillor Jennings?
Yeah, in the report, it does talk about sound system, entertainment and breakfast
Councillor Jennings?
Eight thousand dollars of that is grant money, so that?
No, no, so the ten thousand dollars for the shared connections, there's the event on the Australia Day evening, that's all paid for grant money, the twenty thousand dollars is council allocated money.
Thank you, councillor Rogers?
I'm just concerned that the three thousand five hundred for Swan Hill is probably cutting it a bit short.
Hang on, that's, do you have a question?
A question, yeah, can we increase that?
Microphone.
I'm just wondering if you could increase the allocation for the Rotary Club at Swan Hill for the Australia Day breakfast with that surplus that we've got?
That is something that could be supported because it's within budget.
That'd be an amendment to that, we'd have to amend that in the motion, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions councillors? Could I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move the motion, Mr Mayor, but amending the, including the extra fourteen hundred dollars, was it, Miss Granger?
Yeah, fourteen fifty, I'm pretty sure it was.
So that'll be?
So instead of three and a half thousand? Four thousand?
Four nine fifty, four nine fifty. Make it four nine fifty?
I think, yeah, I think, can we make it just five thousand?
I'm happy with five thousand.
So I was great to, just to, just for, he's just to round it, that's all. Have a second. Second councillor Rogers? Councillor McPhee, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yeah, look, yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor, look, I'd like to thank the, the two Rotary Clubs and the Lions Club for putting their hand up to run the barbecue this year, it won't be the same as it has been in the past, but it will be a barbecue, I don't think they should be able to pocket in any way to run this barbecue, it's a community run event, we had extra funding in this, it's quite ironic that the state government can come up with ten thousand to fund a shared connections day but they give us no funding for an Australia Day event and they talk about equality and all being one, well, if they're going to have a shared connections day, which I've got no issues with, also give us some funding so we can have Australia Day as well. So, but anyway, look, I think it's appropriate that we've got here, we'll look at it into the future and I still have concerns about the ten thousand dollars towards the awards and citizenship ceremony that are not before, I think we've done it a lot cheaper in the past for citizenship ceremonies and then that could be more money spent towards Australia Day functions in the future. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor McPhee. Just wait a second councillor Rogers, they'll give you a little turn? Thank you councillor Rogers.
I'd like to fully support what councillor McPhee has said, Australia Day is a great success in all our small towns, it brings everyone together in our community and we all live in this country together and I fully support bringing people together and have a great day for that, yeah.
Thank you councillor Rogers, do I have any speakers against the motion? Does anybody else wish to speak to the motion? Councillor Broad?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yeah, I'm really excited by this, this motion in particular, Australia Day was a really big part of me growing up in Swan Hill, I think it was a really critical day for community and celebrating nationhood, so this is really, really exciting that we have a lot of different events happening across our municipality and I can't wait to see the municipality show up on Australia Day and support those events. Day and support those events. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Board. Is anybody else wish to speak? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour, the motion is carried. Thank you, councillors. Gender item two point seven, planning application nine Gummo Street, Swan Hill, development of two dwellings and subdivision of land, two lots in the general residential zone. Miss Granger.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is an application for two units. It will demolish an existing dwelling that's on about a block just over 1,000 square metres, and the application's been assessed against the extensive planning scheme controls and generally satisfies the relevant provisions. It should respect neighbourhood character and will maintain prevailing built form, will add a new crossover. Both dwellings will have double garages, so they shouldn't contribute to car parking issues. The application was advertised and we received one objection. The concern is the impact on street parking because this area does take some overflow from the hospital, concerned about the existing garage wall being the pool boundary fence for the neighbouring property and making sure that that is protected and doesn't put at risk their registration that they have with council for the swimming pool. Concerned that a six metre setback doesn't fit the prevailing character, so the neighbouring dwelling has a setback of 11 metres, but along the street you will see a variety of setbacks. Worried about loss of view. The loss of view is not a matter that we can consider in the planning application. Having gone through and assessed the application and the objection to it, we're recommending that you issue a permit, and in this case, we have put in particular conditions that deal with fencing of the neighbouring property to ensure that the swimming pool is well protected on the neighbour's land.
Thank you, Miss Granger. Any questions on the report? Castle McPhee.
Just in relation to the conditions put on in relation to fencing, five, six and seven, or five, six mainly, you've got that it's built to the satisfaction of the responsible property at the cost of the owner. That sounds a little bit ambiguous to the other group. Would that be better having it as the applicant?
Yeah, I would suggest that it be the permit holder because they will no longer be an applicant, so.
Okay. Any other questions? If there's no further questions, could I have a motion, councillors?
Mr. Mayor, with the amendment to the condition, five and six, so instead of the owner, the condition will be to the permit holder, at the cost of the permit holder. So it's as per the recommendations.
Thank you. Got a second for that motion? Castle Rogers. You wish to speak? Castle McPhee.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, I've said this many times in relation to planning decisions. May, for the new councillors, will be the most difficult decisions we have to make at times, because especially when it comes to council, there's obviously people for and people against the particular application, otherwise it's done under delegation. And as a result, we've got to take into consideration all the views in relation to the particular application before us. In this case, I had taken into consideration all the views of the, albeit the one objector, and we must take into consideration those objections. I thought the only relevant one they had was about the pool fencing, and that new condition we put in about the fencing will cover that to make sure that it comes at no cost to them, the replacement of the fence along that line. So with that in mind, I'm more than happy to recommend this decision as per the recommendation and with all those conditions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council McPhee. Castle Rogers, you wish to speak?
Yes, I fully support what Council McPhee says and happy to accept the recommendations with Council McPhee's amendment.
Thank you. Do I have any speakers against the motion? There's no speakers against the motion, I'll put it. All those in favour, the motion is carried. Thank you. Item two point eight, also to do with planning, amendment of section 173 agreement 52 Little Murray Weir Road. Miss Granger, oh, sorry, yes, Castle Rogers, thank you. I'll ask you to leave, thank you. We'll make that on the minutes. Miss Granger.
Council, what you have before you is an application to amend a section 173 agreement. It exists on the title to the land, and it was created as a result of a previous two-lot subdivision. The two-lot subdivision sought to excise off an existing dwelling onto a small lot and then create a balanced farm lot. As part of the requirements or approval of that subdivision, they had to enter into an agreement that wouldn't allow any further accommodation or dwelling to be built on the balanced lot, which has a lot size of 31.1 hectares. Council in June gave in principal support to amend the section 173 agreement. By giving in principal support, that allowed us to give notice of the planning permit application, and we have to give notice to anyone that also has that agreement on their land. In this case, the small lot that had the dwelling excised from it is also subject to this agreement, and that's because the agreement covers three matters. It wouldn't allow any further subdivision. It recognised that small lots might be impacted on agriculture from time to time, and it wouldn't allow any further subdivision of the 31 hectare lot, which is the lot before you today. We received one objection. They're concerned that that changes what they, their expectations for the neighbouring lot. So this is the people who own the excised lot. They're concerned that it changes the expectation that's going to allow a dwelling and may reduce the agricultural use of the 31 hectares. In accordance with assessing the application against the decision guidelines for the section 173 agreement, we're recommending that council don't support this amendment to the section 173 agreement.
Thank you, Miss Granger. And do I, any questions, councillors? Castle McPhee.
Um, can you just describe the, say, I was watching maybe the town plus, why did it come before the council really had to get an admissible agreement?
So it's a two-stage process under the Planning and Environment Act. So it says, so I suppose it's testing whether or not council would support this before the applicant goes to the expense of preparing a whole application and going through the process. It's quite a legal process that you go through to amend an agreement, so it's not just a planning application, it will be applications to the titles office if council is supportive. So it can be quite expensive for an applicant to do and quite a long process.
Castle.
And follow up question, Mr. Mayor. So it's an agreement to amend the 173 agreement. Is it only amended because you said there was about three different parts of the ones? It's only to amend the housing side of the, the other two conditions will remain on the
That's correct. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions, councillors? If not, can I, I'll ask for a motion. Counciling field.
Alternative motion, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to? You want to move motion? Sorry?
Can I move an alternate motion?
Yes, you can. Which you submitted.
Prepared prior to the meeting.
Do you want to read that out, councillor Englefield?
Oh, sorry.
It's on the screen for councillors.
The council issued a decision to amend the section 173 agreement for the landowner's lot, two plant subdivision, seven, two, six, four, one, four, fifty-two. Little Murray Weir Road Castle Donington to remove the restriction that does not allow any further dwelling or accommodation to be built on the land and advises all parties to the agreement of this decision.
Thank you, councillor Englefield. Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll see that, Mr. Mayor.
Second, councillor McPhee. Councillor Englefield, you wish to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given that this is the first time I've done this, I'm not sure how, your luck might have to guide me if I'm going a bit off track, but just a few observations regarding the planning scheme report that quite strongly references the 2006 rural land use, 2016 rural land use strategy, which was compiled over 10 years ago and is still used as the key stone document guiding land use in the farming zones. The rural land, the 2016 rural land use strategy has a bias, has a, has an emphasis, sorry, bias, I've put the wrong word, an emphasis on larger and development of larger-scale irrigated agriculture particularly. And that's been generally successful over the last 20 years with significant corporate and investment development. But it's, it's not very favourable to the older irrigation areas and the family farms that operate within those regions. And you, you know, when you drive around the district, you can see some of the struggles. Currently, there's some extras, more struggles coming down the pipeline with the water buybacks. So there are around, from my understanding, there are around six and a half thousand lots in the farming zones, of which 60% of them run at 20 hectares, which is what the, some of the restrictions in the rural land use strategy are really focused around those 20 hectare lots, which were traditionally in the older irrigation areas. The rural land use strategy does make some statements along the lines that it should provide for a range of legitimate uses, commercial, agricultural, rural industry, rural residential and hobby farming, but planning should ensure that they do not negatively impact upon each other. And it also makes a statement along the lines of it often, it is often argued that sub-commercial farms and hobby farms are not lost from agriculture, as they are and can still be used productively, and that sub-commercial farming, hobby farming is a legitimate land use. But all that being aside, you know, given that it's still being used quite heavily for planning decisions now, and it's coming up to 10 years old, I think it highlights it should be a priority that that document being, should be reviewed. Moving on to this, because of the impact it has, for example, on this particular application, it is 31.1 hectares, and so if it wasn't for the 173, as, as the report says, there would be a right to build a house on this property. And when this original application was being put through in 2015, it was in the shadows of the development of that rural land use strategy. And there are a lot of provisions in that rural land use strategy that make it difficult to apply those particular statements that the rural land use strategy actually made. So it kind of contradicts itself, and those people would have been under particular pressure, again, as the report says, to either have the 173 or don't have anything. So they, as much as the report says they did accept the 173 on the residual 31 hectare property, it was really a accept this or, or there's no outcome. So it's 31.1 hectares, which in the old money is 76.8 acres, which is fair, which is a reasonably sized property. And if the house was said to take up a footprint of, well, that's 311,100 square metres. If the house was to take up a footprint of, say, 4,000 square metres, that's in effect 1.2% of the total land area. So I can't imagine that that would have much impact in and of itself. The surrounding properties could mostly be described as hobby farms with some dwellings or dried off land. So house on this parcel would be in keeping with what is prevailing land use immediately surrounding these particular properties.
Thirty seconds.
We are asked to decide, in this context, it's highly unlikely that the site will be turned to be part of a larger farm, and there will be no community benefit in refusing to grant a permit for the dwelling on the site. It would be a community benefit if another house built and the land being managed as a farm in the hope of arresting the slide into further dried off unproductive paddocks. Each case must be determined on its own merits in the context of its individual circumstances. In this case, I believe it is a fair proposal which should receive support, council.
Thank you, councillor Englefield. Councillor McPhee, you wish to speak?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Firstly, congratulations, Mr. Engel, congratulate councillor Engelfield for his first attempt at making a submission in relation to planning. He did very well. Yeah, look, I agree with the situation. Each planning case is on its own merits. Back in 2015, this was two lots, that was a boundary realignment, basically. It went from 26 hectares with an owner, which they could have built a house on, and you had a 12 hectare lot. What they've, when they subdivided, it went down to the smaller lots here where we had 31 hectares and the remaining seven round figures, seven hectares was, had the house on it. So by, without this 173, as councillor Engelfield said, it's an as of right, you could build a house on 31 hectares in the irrigation department, in the irrigation area, because it needs only to be 20 hectares. By removing this, I think it's, where that land is situated, it's in an area whereby it would be hard to join it to other farms to make a bigger farm. It is surrounded by a lot of small hobby type farms. With the 31 hectares it is, there is a possibility that it could be a, make a living out of that land if they had a house on it. So I'm in all for removing that as part of the section 173, but leaving the rest where it cannot be subdivided any further because we must ultimately look after farming land as our, as our planning schemes, both ours and the state government indicate. We must look after plan, farming land, and I think we are by doing this in this case. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Any speakers against the motion? Somebody else wish to speak to the motion? If not, I'll put the motion, those in favour, to approve it. The motion is carried. Thank you. Item two point nine, extension of time application, 27 River Road. Miss Granger.
What you've got before you today, council, is an application to extend a planning permit that was issued in 2022 for a house at 27 River Road on land having an area of 2.31 hectares. As part of the application to extend, the application was referred to the North Central CMA. They've provided council with an objection. They're concerned that this land was just protected by a levy bank during the 2022 floods, but that the levy bank is not as stable as they would like to see it and therefore may not protect this land and a potential dwelling from future floods. It's unusual for us not to support the first extension to a planning permit application, but it's also unusual to get an objection to it. So council officers are recommending that you don't extend the permit on the basis of the professional advice from the CMA. That's the recommendation before you.
Thank you, Miss Granger. Any questions, councillors? Councillor McPhee.
Yeah, thanks, Miss Granger. The council management authority, this was basically by their objection, the first instance for the granted permit.
Yes.
And just follow up question. The lower, yes, Lower Murray Water have actually identified a block out near their next door to it, where there's a possibility of a future treatment plant being built there in what they say is a not protected flood zone. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, Miss Granger.
Thank you, councillor McPhee. Castle Thornton.
Just like to acknowledge the North Central CMA's objection.
Do you have a question? Sorry. We're not debating at the moment, just questions at the moment.
Apologise.
That's okay.
Apologise. In that case, no.
Thank you. Any other questions? If there's no other questions, could I ask for a motion, councillors? Councillor Englefield.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move an alternate motion.
Yes, councillor Englefield. Would like to raise your alternate motion.
The council granted an extension of time pursuant to condition 18 of planning permit 2021-116 to allow a further period of three years to commence the development of dwelling from the date of expiry, being 15 April 2022.
Thank you, councillor Englefield. Do I have a second for that motion? Castle Thornton.
Can I ask a couple of questions in relation to the motion, Mr. Mayor?
I'll allow that. Councillor McPhee.
Normally, the permits are granted for two years. Why three years?
On the consultation.
Sorry.
Miss Granger.
This has taken a while to get through to you for decision, so it should have, the permit would have expired in April 2022, we're now at December. It seems unfair on the applicant to remove eight months from their time to extend the dwelling, so that's why we've recommended three years, which gives them just over what we would normally give them of two years.
Well, thank you. Sorry, so should that be 2022 or 2024?
2024, I'm at my.
Should be 2024, thank you. So that would, just for clarity, that would extend the permit end date to fifteen of April two thousand and twenty seven?
No, for three years. Oh, yeah, twenty twenty seven, yeah.
Just for clarity, thank you. You're still, you're happy with that motion, Councilor Englefield?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
You're still happy to second that motion with that change? Council Thornton?
Yes.
Thank you. Who's to speak for the motion, Councilor Englefield?
Yeah.
No, twenty twenty four, sorry. Sorry. Still twenty twenty four, but the three years will be twenty twenty seven. Thank you.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the primary objections objective is the CMA and there's just a couple of comments, I suppose I'd like to make on that. The condition of the levy as it is won't turn on whether this application is approved or not. Who is responsible for the levy bank ultimately in the future will not turn on whether this application is approved or not. The 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 safety or otherwise people who may be called in in the event of another flood won't turn on whether this application is approved or not. There is already considerable community infrastructure on the tin tinder flats. So regardless of whether this application is approved or not, the issues of the levy bank will still remain, will still need to be grappled with. And as per the permit that's being proposed, there are some engineering solutions that would actually make this particular development substantially more flood flood prone, flood flood safe than most of the existing dwellings and infrastructure that's already on those flats. For example, it has to be filled to a minimum of sixty seven point nine metres, for example. And then the the finished floor level, the house has to be a minimum of three hundred millimetres above one in a hundred year flood event. So there's considerable and and available engineering solutions to the problems of inundation and the like. Given that those engineering solutions can be can be put in place, I don't see any reason why this shouldn't proceed.
Thank you, Councilor Englefield. Council Thornton, you wish to speak?
I just want to support the discussion brought by Councilor Englefield and also acknowledge the submission from North Central CMA. Acknowledge the fact that it's a flood prone area, but realise that there is considerable infrastructure there. We need to, as a council, get involved in attracting funding, et cetera, to improve that infrastructure, improve the levies and so that all of the infrastructure out there is protected rather than, as you say, knock back planning applications like these that are in keeping with the similar housing and such that is on River Road and close to town.
Thank you, Councilor Thornton. Does anybody wish to speak against the motion? Is anybody else wish to speak to the motion?
Oh, yes, please, the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, look, just a question I didn't ask the officer, but I'm aware of. The original application, original permit, beg your pardon, was issued to a previous owner. So the current owner only took over the property after that permit was issued, so they haven't had it for the full two years neither. So I think it's only fair in its instance to give the opportunity, the new owner, the opportunity to have the full two years to build a build a residence on that block. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council McPhee. All right, I'll put the motion, those in favour of the motion to grant the exception of time? Oh, that motion is carried. Somebody could grab Councilor Rogers, please? Councilor Rogers got lost in the Christmas display. He might have jumped on the sleigh.
Must be in North Pole, Mr. Mayor.
He could be in the North Pole. We'll just wait till Councilor Rogers returns. He's gone? Right. We continue? Well, we've got to call him, so we'll we'll continue the meeting and if Councilor Rogers rejoins us, we'll let him know of the outcome of those two, those two items. Oh, here he is. Welcome back, Councilor Rogers. We thought you might have disappeared to the North Pole. Christmas display out there. Just to let you know, Councilor Rogers, the outcome of those two items. Item two point eight, relation to the one seven three agreement at fifty two Little Murray Weir Road. That that report was, the motion was to approve a notice of decision to amend that one seven three agreement to remove the restriction that does not allow any further dwellings on that. And in relation to two point nine, the extension of time application was approved by council. The outcome of those two items. Section three of the agenda, officer reports for noting, we have none. Section four, decisions which need action ratification, Mr. CEO, the sign and seal, four point one.
As read, Mr. Mayor, there was there was one document that was signed and sealed and it was relating to avoiding further subdivision of land to prevent fragmentation of agricultural land. Further attached planning permit, so that was signed.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Can I have someone to move that sign and seal?
Yes, by the way, I just want to make sure.
Thank you. Seconded, Councilor Englefield, you wish to speak to that? Thank you. All those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. And four point two, council assemblies, record of attendance and agenda items. The recommendation is that council notes the content of the report. Is there any changes or anything to that report, councillors? If not, can I have a motion that do note contents? Council Broad, seconded, Councilor McPhee. You wish to speak to that? No. All those in favour? Motion is carried. Thank you. We have no notices of motion. Do we have any foreshadowed items, councillors? Do we have any urgent items not included in the agenda? If not, we will move on to consider and order on councillor reports. And who would like to go first? Council McPhee, thank you.
Yeah, it's in the report, Mr. Mayor, submitted report, I think I've attended to. But the one thing I'd like to highlight was the Yearning Never Scholarship presented to L V H. I'm glad they said that, I didn't have to pronounce her surname at the ceremony. But that was at the Flow College Awards. Look, I think this staff need to be congratulated what work they do down at Flow and the students as well that are plus learning options at the college. It gives kids that can't obtain or can't cope within a normal school environment, it still gives them an education which is very important for their future. And Alar is actually looking at doing a future course of TAFE in relation to mental health, which is really pleasing, pleased a bit from our area. But I think congratulations need to go out to the Flow campus, what they're doing. And I believe they are expanding on the amount of kids they have in the age groups that they do do out there. So that's great news to them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Council McPhee. We'll keep going around the room. Councilor Englefield.
Well, I've attended the December Reba meeting and. Microphone, please. I attended the Reba, December Reba meeting. And for those of you who may probably be aware, this Reba's in a bit of influx at the moment. So they're still grappling with with what sort of role that they are going to fill moving forward. They still are going to be an active organisation, but they're tending to probably pull back a bit. But we'll see where that goes. The next meeting's in January. On on behalf of the mayor, went to the Haven Home Safe opening in Robin Street, which has all its mailboxes on Latchy Road, which is awfully confusing, but apparently that's an Australia Post thing. But anyway, and that was that was fantastic. There's thirteen units in there, five point two mil approximately was spent to build those thirteen units for affordable housing. They obviously have a long and, you know, unfortunate waiting list of people to get into those houses. And they're they're hoping to have, if not all of them, certainly the majority of them filled prior to Christmas, which will be fantastic for those people who are fortunate enough to be able to get one. They truly are magnificent buildings, two and three bedroom buildings that that anyone would be really, really appreciative of being in. And and it's a great initiative between Haven Home Safe and the state government. They're doing twenty two in Mildura, they're doing some of Bell Ranald, they're at Horsham, they're all over the place, as as most people probably know. So that was, that was, I actually really enjoyed that and I'm glad that I got to go on your behalf, Mr. Mayor. And then, of course, we had to meet councillor, councillor with a councillor with a, which was a bit of a worry, councillor with a candy cane at the Christmas, at the Robb Mar Christmas Fair, which was, as Michelle, Ms. Granger has already referenced, was really good. It was a really great event, first time it's been run by Rotary this year. And they really did a fantastic job. And I had a great time, particularly when Michelle showed up to help. And Michelle's a whiz, handing out the the water bubblers and the candy canes, I'd have to say, she was fantastic. So next time I have a coffee with a councillor, I hope that Michelle comes along. So thank you very much for accompanying me. And that's about it.
Thank you, Councilor Englefield. Councilor Rogers? Microphone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I probably took it on myself tonight, I had a bit of a tour of our whole northern and eastern boundaries along the river and I got some great ideas from our neighbour in municipalities, how they look after their river precinct and our forests and nature. And yeah, I'm back now and hope to be able to present those ideas to council in the future to improve what we've got.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Rogers. Council Jennings? Microphone, please.
I'm just waiting for mine to pop up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So yes, the Housing Action Group, I think I reported on at the briefing, but I thought it was a fantastic meeting, very positive. Some good outcomes starting to happen. It's been further formalised, the group has been further formalised and going to move forward. So some really good outcomes out of that and some good positive vibes, I felt. The Swan Hill District Health opening of the ED Day was a fantastic success in excess of five hundred people toured through the site and most of them were there to watch Director Bruce strut his stuff out the front. But no, they were very happy with the numbers that went through and the comments comments made were how wonderful the new facility is and hopefully it's the start of some ongoing process for the hospital in in improving the facilities for Swan Hill and region. Coffee with the councillor in conjunction with Council Broad and the mayor was was quite good. We had a number of people come up to us and chew our ear for want of a better terminology. Those concerns have been addressed already, so thank you to staff for responding to those, hopefully satisfactorily. But yes, I thought it was well worthwhile. The market itself was was well attended. I believe it's a new incarnation of it, with new people running it. Sixty odd stalls in attendance, so that's setting them up for going forward for future markets. So overall, a good positive thing. And I'd forgotten to include representing council at the New South Wales Open, wonderful event at our previous meeting.
Thank you, Council Jennings. Council Thornton?
Not a lot to report in official duties for council, given that I'm in a busy harvest period. But I have been able to attend the annual general meeting of the Friends of Niwva Nifra Park. I was also able to attend the general meeting of Sustainable Living in the Malley, where we've adopted a five year strategic plan that group has been working on for the last twelve months. Unfortunately, I was at apology at the Swan Hill Regional Art Gallery General Meeting last week. But I will attend formally the next meeting of the Central Victorian Greenhouse Alliance, having been accepted as the board member. That's this Thursday. I was also on apology for the Housing Action Committee meeting.
Thank you, Council Thornton. My report is as tabled. I'll just highlight a couple of things there. It's been quite a bit of media, as you'd probably expect with a with a new council and and reelected mayor. So that's been great to to highlight all the great things that are that are happening in in Swan Hill and to to help introduce the the new council to everybody. It's that time of year where school presentation nights are a dime a dozen, so I've been getting around those. First meeting of the Murray River Group of Councils, of which there's quite a few new mayors in that group. So looking forward to working with them over the next twelve months to to advocate on behalf of of the councils up and down the the Murray River. And keynote for me is I've been honoured with being the number one duck holder in the SES New Year's Day Duck Race this year, which is quite an honour and a great, a great event for the local SES. It is their major fundraiser of the year and all I can do is commend the work that the volunteers do out there. I got a tour of their facility while I was out there as well and the equipment that they've got, that they maintain. They're ready to go pretty much in any emergency. And I thank the the employers that support those volunteers as well, because without their employers giving them time to go as well, they couldn't do what they do. But hopefully they won't be required too much over the over the Christmas period. But yeah, I do thank them for their work and look forward to seeing the number one duck cross the line first, hopefully. See how we go. Council Broad?
Yeah, we'll just speak to one event that I went to, which was the Little Athletics Open Day. That was out in the Ken Harrison Reserve and that was a fantastic, fantastic event. There was a lot of young athletes there from all around Australia, I believe. There were some interstate athletes. Every part of that facility was used on the day. There was not much spare grass going around. And I believe we even have two young athletes going over to New Zealand next year from our Little Athletics Club for their own athletic development. So it was a it was a fantastic event and they've done a really good job of utilizing that space. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Broad.
So we'll note those reports before we move into camera, just for the general public, because once we come out of camera, pretty much all we'll do is close the meeting. So to the general public, thank you for your attendance this year at the meetings, whether it's been here in person or or on the on the live stream. And I'd just like to take this opportunity on behalf of council to wish our community a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year and enjoy the time with with family and friends. Remember to be kind to those that are that might be less fortunate. And and yeah, enjoy the time, stay safe, and we look forward to seeing you all again in the in the new year. With that, could I have a motion to move into camera? Move Councilor Englefield, seconded, Councilor Rogers. We'll just wait for the live stream to cease.
All in favour? Thank you. Thank you. We are back live and the in-camera item has been dealt with and the results of that will come out in the council minutes when they are released. With that, again, I'd like to thank everybody for their attendance and participation in the meeting. Again, we wish all councillors and staff that are present a very Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Stay safe and we look forward to seeing you all back here in 2025. And with that, I'll close the meeting at 3:23pm. Thank you.